Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the February meeting of the town forum. So you begin our roll call. On the far right, we have Chuck Divido. We have David Francis, who is alternate. We have Michael Els, also an alternate. We have Jason Nystrom, Jason Benone, self, I have Chair and just taking his seat, Vice Chair. We do have a forum, uh, who will be in the meeting. The alternate will be participating, but may not vote unless someone needs to recuse themselves. And it will be available if any matters are continued to a future date, uh, participated votes and votes necessary. Also, the first administrative thing here is the approval of the minutes from the January nineteenth meeting as circulated. If anyone can be discussion or is there a motion on the minutes?
Um, I'd like it to be noted that despite me entering the meeting at seven eighteen, I was there prior to the meeting, trying to get into the meeting. But I had technological issues.
Okay, can make that note. Any other corrections or notations?
I, I will move acceptance of the minutes as revised by Rhonda and recirculated today.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, very good. Uh, all those in favor of approving the January nineteenth minutes? Aye. Are approved. Now.
Just comment from people who please speak into the mic.
Uh, now, just before we dive into the agenda, there's a couple of little administrative items we want to update on the agenda. So under the heading of new business, uh, there's an item number two, which is a list of establishments that have modification, temporary modification of a special use permit to expand outside dining. Uh, due to the actions of the governor of Rhode Island State Legislature, uh, the town planner has requested that this matter be continued to march. If there is some pending legislation that may be addressed in this.
Yep, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the current legislation extends the requirement that they're not subject to zoning through April first of this year. The proposed legislation, which I believe was supposed to be voted on on Monday, but it was, but will, will extend that, uh, legislation through April first of two thousand and twenty-three. So any action that you would have taken in the negative tonight would have been overturned by the state's actions. So what I'm asking is if we continue this to the March meeting, should the legislature not take any action, then we can pick it up again. If they do take some action, then we'll just withdraw this from the agenda and we'll deal with it next year.
Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to continue this to the March agenda.
Just before we do, I just want to clarify, by us punting this a month, it's not going to put, uh, you change these businesses in the.
They have to April first.
They have, okay.
Yep.
And so then I move, we have continue item number two under new business into the, to the March meeting.
Is there a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the motion is passed, uh, that will be continued to March. Uh, one other housekeeping item under new business, uh, we have application of twenty-two dash zero three O L L C, uh, requesting a specially served restaurant in the Village Business zoning district. Is there someone here representing that application? I guess that makes this a little bit even easier. Uh, the materials submitted were found to be, um, incomplete and the board would not have been able to, uh, hear this matter. So I'm going to suggest that the applicant request they continue with the March meeting.
Um, we are here.
Oh, they're on the Zoom, right? Sorry. Can we hear them on Zoom?
Can you hear us?
Yes, go ahead, talk.
Alright, so, um, the application that was submitted is vastly incomplete and cannot be reviewed by the board. It does not provide any information about the proposed special use other than the application form of the agenda of facts. Uh, there is a checklist available in the building officials' office of the requirements of what documents must be submitted. Uh, so I'm going to ask that in your own best interest, you request a continuance, uh, to at least the March meeting to allow yourself time to prepare and submit those documents.
Were you able to hear that?
Um, yes, we're unclear of, we were given a checklist and I thought we had supplied all the correct information.
The only thing I have here, the packets, and maybe if my package is sufficient, does anyone else have on application twenty-two dash zero three? I have the petition for credit, agenda of facts, the radius map, the list of the waters. So no one else on the board is in receipt of any plans, floor plans, site plans, uh, any of the items that are listed in the checklist that are part of the required review for special use.
Nope.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, I emailed a floor plan to Bob and Maya and, um, you should have that and they know, I mean, it would be, it would have been nice if this was like told to us before this time. Um, you know, once it gets put to the, you know, I was in the building department talking to Maya when I submitted it and we went through the checklist and, and it seemed like everything was there when I handed it in. So, um, we're a little bit surprised, not a lot surprised because we run into a lot of road bumps, uh, in this process. So, um, you know, we're not sure what else we can do or what else.
Here's a, the clerk did not give you all the information that the applicant.
More information submitted?
Apparently, yes, so, I mean, I think there's some other issues they have to work through in terms of their liquor license. So I think continuing it to March is appropriate.
It would have to be because the board, uh, has to be afforded time to adequately review the submitted materials prior to the hearing. And since that did not occur, uh, we have no alternative but to continue this to the March meeting.
So I don't know what the disconnect with what Maya was putting in the packet, but, uh, Uriah, I would just suggest you request that you continue to march and then we'll make sure that they get the complete package.
We, I guess we have no other choice, so, yeah.
Well, the other choice is they would deny the application, which you don't want.
No, we don't.
Yeah, you don't want to withdraw it, so I mean, just has to have it continued.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, that's fine, right? But we're, it seems like every turn they were coming up with something here and, and we did submit everything and it wasn't processed. So why, you know, I.
I would just say that anything that was approved tonight would have been conditioned on you getting your liquor license. So it wouldn't have been an absolute approval anyways.
I gotta say, there's so much like cart before the horse stuff with this process, I don't know how anybody does it.
Well, most people get an attorney to help them through the process, but.
Mmm, nigger.
What?
So I mean, it's not, I mean, we're not going to spend time discussing this.
Nigger, nigger.
Are you formally requesting a continuance?
Shut up, you stupid. I think you'd be. Stop muting me, you stupid nigger. No, stop muting me, you stupid nigger.
Wow.
Fucking stupid nigger.
Okay, so they are, uh. Apologies for that.
And the audience disregard that and will not be included in the record. So back to the applicant, uh, are you formally requesting that we continue this matter to the March meeting?
Are we, yes, we are formally requesting to continue this.
Okay, you, uh, would someone on the board, uh, like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to continue application twenty-two dash oh three, uh, to the March seventeenth, maybe? No. And someone second me on the date, sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now the matter is being changed to the March meeting, um, and I would suggest that the material, whenever the materials are ready, um.
I'll have my.
They should be confirmed, whatever's been submitted to make sure it does fulfill.
Yep.
Checklist, and there's no point in sending it out if there's still lacking. Okay? Now, uh, those two housekeeping items out of the way, uh, we can, uh, dive into the agenda. We're going to begin, uh, with old business. The first matter of the old business is a remand to the zoning board of review for further findings by the Superior Court in a decision dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Serving application twenty dash thirty-seventh, Daniel Carton and Marissa Johnson, owners and Tracy Johnson, applicant. Twenty-four Laurel Lane, Flat Mass thirteen G, Lot two oh two, request for a special use permit under section thirty-two forty-seven to build a two-family dwelling in the R ten zoning district. The solicitor is going to give a brief, um, introduction, uh, about the responsibilities of the board. See, that's.
Yeah. Now, the state, this application, it had been told via email and in fact, the public shall know that they are not going to participate in this particular application as advised. Yeah, email to this board, opposition is that the task at hand is a very narrow task. Basically, the Superior Court judge asking this board to make sufficient findings of fact, um, which they based their decision on. It's that simple. So my advice in the simplest way would be, pretend that the application, all the evidence, all the testimony was just heard, we closed that portion of it and now a motion for discussion is appropriate.
Do we need to invite the attorney for the applicant to just make a statement?
If this all be lower, which you can show.
Oh, absolutely.
Also, would you just push the button and make sure the green light is on? Okay.
Thank you, uh, members of board and solicitor. I, uh, discussed this briefly with the solicitor and I gave him my word, I'm not going to present an argument to this board tonight. Uh, so I won't. But I would say to the board is I hope you look carefully at both your prior decision, prior transcript from that hearing and for, and also to the Superior Court decision, uh, in this matter. I, with great deference, I am going to object to the procedure that's being undertaken tonight. I believe that my clients are entitled to a de novo review of this application. Having said that, that's between Mr. Ferrer and I to deal with at some other point in time. But I would point out that my clients have been very patient, waiting for a resolution of this matter. I would point out that you all, per testimony, and all made findings of fact, first time around in August of two thousand and twenty for a special use permit. I would also point out that you have to be guided by the warrant zoning ordinance and not your personal predilections. Having said that, and I hope I didn't go too far, and I'll just listen.
So, Mr. Chair.
I would just do a roll call vote to make sure that each member, um, did receive the record and have completely examined the entire record as presented to them. And then proceed with a motion for discussion and the board can now take the discussion.
Very good. So I will ask each of you, you have received, uh, the record, transcript, court decision, all the relevant documents that are adequately reviewed. Uh, Mr. Divido, have you?
Yes.
Mr. Holby, have you?
Yes.
Mr. Nystrom, have you?
Yes.
Mr. Rehna, have you?
Yes.
Uh, and I have also reviewed all of the documents. So would someone like to make a motion to, uh, open discussion on the matter?
So moved, this is Mr. Rehna.
Okay, is there someone who would like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor of opening discussion on this?
Aye.
Uh, so the matter is now open for discussion. So the task, uh, before us, uh, is to delineate findings of fact and present them in the form of a motion upon which the board will then vote. Uh, the findings of fact must be derived from the record and only from the record. Uh, there's not going to be any new testimony presented, there's not going to be any new evidence given. Uh, no member of the public, uh, will be able to comment on this matter. Uh, we must rely solely on the information presented at the original hearing and, uh, come up with findings of fact, uh, that support our motion based on that original hearing and the documents. So with that, uh, would anyone like to, uh, present their view of potential findings of fact? All right, yes, Vice Chair Barrett?
Findings of fact are not accurate. Or taken, unfortunately, that is, uh, you know, it's, uh, you gain a certain motion. Um, it's high, uh, to centers. Now, these were from findings of fact, uh, promised, but, um. In our. That, that, that's important. Set it up. We're not able to spell that source. So I know, uh, when I have a list of people, like, this special use is compatible with the neighboring land use. Uh, I would.
And so do we have things, well, so do we have a specific piece of evidence in the record that demonstrates that it's not compatible?
Getting evidence, that's the only information from, that was told and presented to articulate of this.
So I can say that from the testimony that was given, um, there was evidence or that a finding of fact that it wasn't fact compatible, um, based on the testimony that's given. We did not provide any evidence of a finding of fact from the testimony demonstrating that it was not compatible.
What is the evidence you're using to find it is?
That's the problem we have, right? The evidence, it's where I can go back to the motion.
Let's go one by one because some of it's not accurate.
Yeah, alright, so the first, uh, the motion we had here, a finding of fact that we entered into the record, uh, was that based on the testimony, it is compatible with the neighboring land use. Two-family is a residential use. We had, the testimony was stated, this is going to be a two-family. Uh, we can identify that that is a residential use. And in the testimony, we identified that the prevailing area is of residential character. We also identified that there's a mix of housing types within the general vicinity of the area, uh, as was noted in the record, including two-family and multifamily. So the record, uh, the testimony that was taken in the record, uh, there were statements made that supported these, uh, positions that there were a mix of housing types, including neighbors, uh, the applicant. Uh, we also heard that, um, area is a residential area. I think that's clearly, I mean, it's definitely residential.
It's definitely, but it's single-family residential. They're trying to pull areas that are not part of Laurel Park as multifamily.
Well, I think there was a, uh, debate about in the record, um, what is the surrounding area that, uh, one definition as presented seemed to focus only on Laurel Lane itself and the immediate adjacent properties, whereas there was other testimony that describes the surrounding area in a broader context.
Yes, that would be, I mean, you made the comment, one lane doesn't make a neighborhood, but there are several streets in the Laurel Park Association, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's made up of a beach, well, yeah, that's a.
And is that not the record? That on the record, we got a really pinpoint record, not any new annual opinions.
But the opinion of the neighborhood is an opinion from the applicant. Yeah, but it's, it's documented on the record, but it's not an accurate statement made by the applicant.
No, it's.
No, no, I understand that, but what happens when people give false testimony?
That's correct.
Well, limited, unfortunately, if somebody put on insufficient evidence or information to you, that's on that either side, the, uh, the applicant or the opposition can't include stuff now with kind of building stuff, unfortunately. If I wanted to prove to this board that it was a traffic issue zone, what I would do is, I can't just put, as John Spent, the late person, say, hey, I believe this is a traffic issue, but I believe this is actually in Mexico. So he says, we're not going to rely on that record of the study.
That's true, but you're, but how do you do that when it's on a Zoom meeting the first time? And you don't, you don't have the wherewithal, you don't know what the applicants are going to say at the meeting. You have no idea what's going on there. And so you're asking this board to rely on what's in this, which I understand, but if it's not accurate, they could be making a wrong decision.
But what has been, what has been, what has been?
Well, can, so can, can, can the board? Look at, can the board do a site visit? Look at it, it's, it's no, this rule is just, I'm asking, um, do a site visit. They can understand what is in the, what is in the, you know, the decision from the judge or what's in the record. And they can make up their own mind whether it's accurate or not. There's no new information, it's right off the record, but they can see for themselves. And it's, it's a way for the board to be away from the, uh, away and have a meeting. And so it doesn't violate any meeting, you know, meeting laws.
That experience would be new to this application.
No, it, it wouldn't be, it would not be new to this application.
It would be, it would be.
It wouldn't.
Not after that. You gotta really rely on what was done during the application, as patient to this. It's solely that. Well, once that's the task that the judge has, we can just track this one with that clear direction. But is it, is it, let me ask this, is it an option? And I'm not suggesting one or the other, but.
It's about to do the same thing.
The board determined that the record, um, we now feel just not provide sufficient evidence to create findings of fact, uh, that we can throw this out and start the day.
But the question at hand is, could we decide that this process is not acceptable to the board and rehear this from scratch?
No, that's not the direction. For example, if, if the judge had been in for further discussion, thus, if there not been issue, yes. That direction of the judge very clear in terms of like the task is directed, findings of fact, that having met with you, actually, we're ready to go. The people, yes, no, yes, or no.
So this finding was that those people that voted in the negative had insufficient findings of fact. And did not, those people that voted in the affirmative had sufficient findings of fact.
I think the problem is that we're tasked with, our hands are tied for doing the right thing here. This, this thing is getting, uh, unfortunately, a Zoom meeting is getting slid through. And in my opinion, it's greased with a bunch of baloney. And now here we're at the end of a Zoom, end of this era with a Zoom meeting. And even if it was full, we wouldn't be able to talk to them. I can't believe that we can't revisit this thing.
Now, why it's back here, unfortunately, let's, we get to that point because it's not sufficient.
Correct, I, I understand some of that, but I also understand that we're making a big change to something that, uh, has not been done in seventy years. People have lived there for thirty and forty years. The applicants are, have been there a year and there are many people on this board that have been, been and worn their whole lives, born and raised, and this thing was a sort of a surprise. And you're, and you're absolutely right about the findings of fact, uh, and the, and the, and the votes to deny it, the two votes to deny it. But our hands are somewhat tied. I mean, if someone comes up and says, you know, this is part of the neighborhood and now that's in the record and the finding of fact, when in fact, there's a chain link fence and crushes and it's, it's completely different, then it's, then it's wrong testimony.
Unfortunately. I mean, if there are findings of fact in the record that you can identify to support your, um, vote against it and you put those on the record, that's a possibility. Or if there are other stronger findings of fact in the record in favor of the motion, uh, you can also identify those. I think it's important to note that, as the solicitor said, the judge has determined that the votes in favor already had sufficient findings of fact, um, to support the motion. Unless there's specific testimony that can be pointed to, I don't believe we can go outside of that. If, if that was, it's, it's God, I know that, um, sorry that you were pressing yourself with this God, and if, if you're.
No, I, I'm aware of that.
But you have to meet the fourth standard, the one that's hard. You're gonna have to, because it's not for a special use, we do not need it.
It's gotta be compat, it's gotta be compatible with the land use. As I said, there's a nuisance or the hazard standard, uh, has to fit with the comprehensive plan and it has to serve the overall public convenience of welfare. And if we want to go through again, motion, I mean, we addressed the first one in the motion, that the motion cited the testimony that was given from, uh, various individuals, that there are a mix of housing types in the neighborhood. Now, we can, um, dissect what the meaning of neighborhood or surrounding area is, but a majority of the board felt that the surrounding area encompassed a broader, uh, definition that those who were descended from that. And, I mean, that may be something that we have agreed to disagree, if we can't be brought around. So your view of what the surrounding area is? We can't be brought around, you know, your view of what the surrounding area is doesn't fit with the remainder of the board's view that we may not be able to come to terms on that on particular points. But that was defined for the majority of the board. If we want, just so we can go through each of the standards, the nuisance or hazard, so that the testimony showed that the plans submitted would be developing conformance with the setbacks and other requirements for this development. So majority of the board felt that there was testimony to support that they're not creating any nuisance or hazard, they're within the setbacks. I believe we addressed the parking issue. I, you know, we're going to, there's no indication from all the testimony that nuisance or hazard was present. Do either, do either of you differ on that particular finding?
In my opinion, Laurel Lane is all single family houses. Maybe, maybe an occasional in-law apartment, but if it, now you're changing the neighborhood. You're gonna change the values.
But here's a question. Do the houses on Laurel Lane appear to be single family houses? Or are they actually single family houses?
They appear, and if they're not, then there's something wrong.
But that's the problem. This development, according to the record, will appear to be a single family house.
Well, then that, that's another point I have to make. They stated that we're gonna make it look like a single family house that would fit in.
Yeah.
But that's their, I mean, that we have no control.
Because they're admitting that all the houses on that street are single family houses.
No, they're admitting all the families on that, all the houses on that street look like single families. There's a difference.
They are single families.
They don't have to be. You can subdivide something that looks like a single family home. There's testimony in the record from the resident of 22 Laurel Lane that multifamily houses exist in that neighborhood.
They don't exist on that road.
Well, the judge actually talked about that. The judge said, it's in the, not particularly the town. That's just the rest of that, this game. So I've gotten that to say that.
And in fact, we had extensive discussion on a very large apartment building that is within the neighborhood of what the majority of the board.
As a crow flies, but it's not in the neighborhood.
It's directly behind the property in question.
Well, I disagree with you.
Exactly, though, but it's not part of the neighborhood at all. None of those people can be part of Laurel, Laurel Park Association or Laurel Park.
But there's no standard.
And I know it's not in there.
There's no standard that says that you have to be a part of a neighborhood association to be part of the surrounding area.
Well, the surrounding area by definition would be the Laurel Lane area of the association and the beach club and the park and all that. The fact that it's on Medicom Avenue or Almeda Avenue or whatever it is.
Top of Homestead.
Homestead. Zero element. Just because it's close to it doesn't mean it's part of it. It's got all bushes, a chain, chain link fence. It's not, it's, it's in the surrounding area, but so is McDonald's. I mean, it's not part of the neighborhood.
And I don't believe there is any specific definition in the ordinance of what is considered neighborhood or surrounding areas.
No, but a good, a good site visit would clear that up. And while there's no clear definition, common sense would tell you that McDonald's is not part of Laurel Lane Park Association. Nor the 67 unit of apartments.
But I don't know that being part of a certain association is the only criteria by which a neighborhood is funded.
Well, it isn't, but it is certainly an area. I mean, they remain. Well, we can do that, but we can also.
So I, sorry.
Well, we're just gonna disagree.
Well, I just want to understand something. It's, and then you never, on this one, that the record lacks, lacks evidence or be certain of position of either the applicant or the opposition, right? If it's not there, it's not there. In terms of evidence, because of, not really go back to that for me. Not be a, like, first, you believe a certain thing, not be a Caroline.
Right? Sounds funny. So, Vera and Chuck, I'm both objecting to all four of the findings of fact that were originally presented. Because it could be, so it could serve the public to be with the welfare, but you could still feel that it's not compatible with the neighboring land use. I mean, are there, are you objecting to all four of these findings? I mean, I think they need to be taken individually, just one does not necessarily preclude the others.
No, that's true, and I, I am objecting to all of them. And I've picked out stuff in here, in the record, in the record. I still, you can look at the record in two different ways. To be, to be, you know, be honest, I, even, we are allowed to discuss this. While we have to take stuff off the record, we can see stuff. I would suggest a site visit, because we can see stuff and make our own decisions. And those decisions might change, and we can look at different things in the record that might back up those decisions. Now, I know nobody wants to do it, and I think it picks a string.
Well, I don't think we can do it.
We can do it. Why can't you do it?
Because the direction is here.
The task, the task, as you've told us, though, Ben, is that we have to use this record.
If the site visit was not required to, nothing, it does have to, basically, application process.
Where does it say that?
The judge's decision.
But I just read the judge's decision, and it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that, it doesn't preclude it. It's remanded back to us, but we can educate ourselves, us, on what this record is and if it's right or not.
The findings of fact based on hovering that it's.
Yes.
The record, what is there, possibly, everything's the record, it's the record. That's what we all get.
That's, we can make findings of fact in the record, but we do have the ability to discuss the record right here and, and argue it, right?
Correct.
Well, and we can do that at a site visit as well. What, you, you don't want to do it, but it doesn't say that we, we can go to that site visit. We can see what's to discuss.
We can ban it back again.
Well, that's okay, Bob, just let him talk. He's, he's the lawyer here.
So, Vera.
I know, I know, I don't want to get excited about it, but, but it makes sense that we can look at the record and see if those facts are accurate or not. Because you can't argue it from the record sometimes.
But you actually want to make sure that, based on the case that looks like, that's exactly what the judge is not telling you, right? They kind of just try to break it back down. Unfortunately, that was on the record.
Overall, our task is to do the right thing for Warren, right?
Not morally, but financially, because it's complicated.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. And there's neighbors there that don't want it because their property values will go down if it goes in.
Parties had an opportunity, but they are the way it's said. That's the only evidence, expert.
Yes. Absolutely, they had an opportunity. You know, I'll tell you this. I had to go on the Bristol zoning board last Monday. Zoom. I couldn't get on it. I tried everything I could to get on it. By the time I finally dug up the, the page with the Zoom on it, the meeting was half over. Plenty of people over there that couldn't be on it, so.
Did they have an expert witness?
Well, they, they did not have an expert witness, but the fact that they lived there makes them an expert. I don't need to argue with you, Bob.
I don't argue, but it was.
Well, you're not, I'll, I'll argue with Andrew.
Vera, I just want to get something clear, instead. It's on the record that the applicant could have put a five subdivision in by rights. Wouldn't have to come to them, but he, but it has a vibe was that this was the least of the things that they could do with this property. But there was no expert witness that came forward and said that this is gonna, just because somebody said it's gonna diminish my property values.
Yeah, I think that's one of the issues.
What, are you kidding me?
The judge, the judge would need to see.
You can find one subdivision.
Well, well, that's by two.
But I mean, whether or not it was a subdivision isn't the issue because we're not dealing with a subdivision. But in the lack of testimony, documentable testimony indicates, such as had the neighbors brought a real estate expert or a surveyor or something to say, based on market trends and this research and cite various real estate organizations and say, here is evidence that can be presented and entered as an exhibit showing that property values will diminish. We have no evidence to suggest that. We have people's opinion that it may diminish, but we have other, the applicant's opinion that it won't diminish.
But we have opinions on both. All we have, this whole thing is just opinions. There's no expert testimony in this at all.
You're a testimony, right?
Right, but it's not expert testimony. He's bringing up that the residents could have brought in expert testimony. Nobody brought expert testimony. These are all opinions.
But that's just one piece of the application, right? Obviously, that's very, talking on a, obviously, expert testimony is something that, right? A lead person's testimony, now here's something. If everything else is between, I don't know what you have, basically.
Because I think the finding is that of those who voted in favor of the motion, that the testimony given by the applicant outweighed the testimony given by the neighbors. That it was a stronger case presented by the applicant than presented by the neighbors.
I would agree with you, but that's because, in a large part, it was on the first Zoom meeting.
Well, I can't go back and relive.
I'm aware of that. But on the other hand, we can go back and look at the testimony and, and see if it is accurate or not.
Well, I don't know whether it's, I don't know if we can question its accuracy. If there's a statement made in the testimony that supports a finding of fact, we can't go back and ask the person who made that statement whether or not it's accurate. We have to take it at face value from what is printed in the official record. Now, you can personally, you know, if you find that is not compelling testimony, then you don't have to be compelled to support that finding of fact. But we will, if we're going to be, if we might have findings that are compelling in the opposite direction, we have to have some testimony drawn out from this record that may be compelling case for the opposite position.
Well, I, I think what's frustrating me is that we have this, this document here. It's up to us to decide whether what's accurate and what's not from the document. When, before the meeting, I've had, I had a good look at it. And after the meeting, I've had a good look at it. My conclusions are the same. So, and they differ from some others, so.
So I think the others had, also their own, had visited the site and presented, their other members of the board presented their knowledge of what they consider the neighborhood and surrounding area and their own observations that they felt in a different way.
Well, I'm not, I, I agree with, that might be the case, but, you know. I've made mistakes on this board and some decisions. Generally not. I think I've been on the board, you know, seven years. And I think 12 meetings a year, six average things, it's like 504 decisions we've made. And out of that 504, I think I've disagreed maybe with you, Andrew, four times. In the great scheme of things, that's, that's really nothing. And one of those decisions that I disagreed with you, I think I made a pretty big mistake because I, I went and I did a site visit. I think you might remember, it's a treehouse.
Well, big greenhouse.
And I remember thinking, oh, it's great, treehouse should be there. I don't see any problem having a treehouse there. And I voted against it, and I can remember the late Bob Healy drew down the pictures at, right after the meeting at me, and I looked at him and I said, what the hell was I thinking? So, I mean, you can make mistakes, but if we make a mistake on this, and it's my opinion, but if we make a mistake on this and can't wiggle our way out of it, it's gonna, I believe in, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but in a long time, I think it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood. And I know we're supposed to look at each application at a time. On Medicom Avenue, someone got the first sign up, and then it was the second, and before you knew it, 15 years, that street was ruined. It was largely credited as being one of the prettiest streets, avenues in the country. It was actually one of the first ones, and it's awful. It's a road at the moment.
So, so I think where, where this is heading is that either he wants to concur with the decision, need to present more compelling findings of fact that would change our minds. Or, I mean, if it goes, if it appears at the moment, if it goes to a vote, it looks like the vote is again going to be three to two, which then will be appealed back to the courts once again. And the court, I think, is unlikely to change their position. They will probably send it back to us again.
Certainly, if that's the case, right, since you talked about it. If there's names, you're ready to find some facts, so. They can post that right, it's like, right, or it's like, that's the record here. Liability here, we don't do that. As it throws it, the, the, it's the same thing. You gotta back up why you say it, like, look, it basically won't have to be on the record and part of the record, okay? So, the days, both, both sides have to be, have to clearly articulate why it's intended, it's meant or did not meant based on the record, evidence, testimony, presentation, um, site visit, et cetera. I think that very fair, also, there was liabilities, I hear.
So you just said site visit, so.
No, if you did it, as board members certainly, you know, prior to each application, you go visit the site on their own, that's part of your duties as a board member. So whatever knowledge you brought into the initial hearing is the knowledge you must rely on at this point. What you may have discovered after the fact, or spoken to other people since then, or any new findings you think have come to light are not relevant because it's not what was presented at the hearing with the decision based upon it. And if you have compelling findings of fact against the application, then you're going to need to cite them from the testimony in the record and correlate them with each one of the four standards if you're objecting to all four of the standards.
That's, that's exactly what the judge asked as well.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to, I mean, I don't think, I'm not sure if anyone's trying to convince anyone one way or another, but the, it's like, I think in hindsight, it would have been nice to have the record fleshed out a little more with some other things, but this is the, these are the cards we got. So if you're going, if you're gonna vote one way or the other, if you're against it, we've got the transcripts, we've got some of the other stuff. So if there's something in there, highlight it, point to it, one way or the other. And that just kind of seems where it's at. I mean, you know, I know personally, for me, you know, in hindsight, now that we've seen how this all fleshed out, it would have been nice to get some more information, maybe about the Laurel Park Association, some other items, but it just didn't shake out that way. It stinks, but what we got is what we got.
Does anyone have any specific findings of fact, one way or the other, drawn from the testimony that they want to present to have the board discuss and see if we can reach agreement?
I think we're gonna reach agreement.
I think on page four, line six, this joint said, admits that a two family does not fit the neighborhood.
Hold on, hold on. Page four, line six.
So you'll notice that it looks just like a single family, which is the intent and important to me, so that it, although there are some other multifamily units in the neighborhood, I would like it to look like a single family, just aesthetically, and, you know, believe that it does fit with the aesthetic of the neighborhood.
So what is that finding? So what are you saying of that statement?
Does not fit the neighborhood, even though she's trying to make the house look like it fits. It's still, Wolf in Sheep's Clothing is still a wolf. Still gonna have the extra cars, still gonna have, become a rental unit eventually. It's still gonna do those, that the neighborhood does not want.
And as counter testimony to that, page 13, line 1, I'm the homeowner at 22. "I'm the homeowner at 22 Laurel Lane in Warren. We are an abutter to Daniel and Tracy, and I am here to voice my support for them building this on their lot. In terms of the multifamily unit, I consider that a part of the neighborhood. It's all three or four streets over, and we're all kind of tucked into one place. So, I mean, I don't really see the issue, you know, a two-family home going in onto this large property, especially if it's gonna look like a one-family."
Was the, was there a finding of fact, Barrett or Chuck, that there's specific testimony where someone specifically says there are no other multifamily units in the neighborhood or surrounding area? Someone from the public or?
That would be a, that would be a record in the building official's office. A person can't tell us there are and there aren't. Laurel Lane does not have any multifamilies.
We're relying on the testimony that's been submitted. Yes?
Mr. Ellis, I would like to just read into the record Mr. Hobie's testimony from that meeting. And I'm quoting from page, uh, 32 of the record. Mr. Hobie states, "It's just what Mr. Ellis said. I disagree with the findings. I don't think the special use will be compatible with the neighboring land uses. It's setting a precedent, and I don't want, I think individually, the house looks like a single family. It might go, it may not, but I don't see it being compatible with that street as I've driven around it." So apparently, Mr. Hobie has done a site visit.
Yeah, I think several, my recollection is that several members had said they have...
Well, to ask for another site visit, I'm not sure what the benefit of that is.
Yeah, I think he was asking...
Well, I've obviously saw it differently.
Site visit, but that's not possible. We could have each made our own site visits as we do on any application to ascertain our, uh, understanding of the area. But I don't, cannot now hold a group site. I think we have to pass that.
I, I still don't...
I just don't know that there's any basis in law from the judge's decision that allows us to conduct, um, another, you know, fact-finding mission outside of what's already been done at the original year.
I, I think if there is a desire to do it, and, and, uh, like it were, like it may, and Chuck, I think, um, we could do a site visit and look at the facts in this record and see what's what. We don't have to add anything new. We don't have to add any new testimony, but things can be taken a different way. And it's important to do that. I mean, sometimes, like I said with that treehouse thing, you can miss stuff. We don't wanna miss this. And maybe, and maybe I'm wrong.
I don't, so I don't know if, um, discuss amongst the board, um, if there's any point in further discussion or we should just simply move to a motion and let the chips fall where they're meant to be.
I, I mean, I'll just point it out. I mean, I share Barrett and Chuck's concerns, but like I said before, it's just, it's the cards we got. Um, you know, I was going through the, um, the transcript from the hearing, and I, uh, Ms. Robyn Remy was, if I recall correct, was the, I think, the only, um, abutter, uh, in speaking really in opposition based on whether or not this is a two-family. There's some other complaints. One was dealing with a wildlife, and another was dealing with a, uh, the lot behind it, which was all, you know, deemed to be, uh, you know, irrelevant. But I was looking through Ms. Remy's comments, and again, she was, my recollection was the strongest, um, in opposition, you know, but, you know, really, she concedes that it will look like, she said, "Look, it's, I understand the look of the house. Of course, it will look like a one-family house. I mean, I live, I have a few houses that I own that look like one-family houses, but they're actually zone two-family, and they're in areas that are full of multifamily houses." And she, she goes on to, you know, states some concerns about, about what could happen on down the road. But unfortunately, her testimony, I don't, I don't believe gets into what the characters of the area. I mean, certainly, I think she lives pretty close. Obviously, she's an abutter. Um, not an abutter, yes, she, she lives in the area.
Well, exactly. That, that's her concern. She owns other two families, doesn't want the resident of the neighborhood to turn into that. That's, that's the way I read her testimony. I mean, she was in opposition to it.
Yeah, and I think what would have, would have been better for me is, I think if, you know, she said something to the effect of, without a doubt, "I've gone down the road, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G," or whatever, how could they know, you know, house, you know, one Laurel Lane to whatever, they're all single family, you know, or, or they're not. I think that would have been, in hindsight, would have been useful to know, but we don't have it. Um, so I think, you know, you know, obviously, you, you know, based on Ms. Remy's testimony, you know, there were concerns about making this a, a two-family house, but, um, you know, those are just her concerns. They don't get into, it's changing the character.
To the point of creating a finding of fact, if she had come to the board with a map she had prepared and marked out, you know, "These are all the single-family homes on this, uh, lot," and she presented some document that we could have entered as an exhibit, um, showing someone's analysis. Now, we can take that for what it's worth. She made a layperson, but there we would have had some document in the record showing what the rationale behind the objection was, but we don't have any of that.
So somebody would have to present something that's in the building official's office as an official record?
Has to be introduced, and just because something's on file of the building official's office doesn't mean that it's part of the record of the hearing. It's not presented in the hearing. It's not evident. We can't know in our own minds what's on file in an office somewhere. It would have, that map would have to be introduced and say, "Here's a map that shows X, Y, and Z, so it becomes part of the record." Otherwise, every document on file in the town of Warren would be considered part of the record. I don't think that's reasonable to expect.
Well, as far as Mrs. Remy goes, I mean, her husband was murdered the, uh...
No, father-in-law.
Father-in-law. Well, she was at the meeting here next day.
That was a different meeting.
No, that was, yeah, no, that was her ex-husband, yeah. Ex-husband.
Whatever, whatever family matters would have to be announced or get her, I think.
But I'm just saying, she, there's no way she's gonna put all that together.
Well, I mean, again, any, any member of the public, if they have a strong feeling on an application, then certainly take it upon themselves, or a group of the public could hire an attorney, could hire a real estate expert, could hire, uh, various people if they feel there's a need to, uh, make their case with evidence. We've had that in the past where people have presented, uh, as simple as photographs or a hand-drawn sketch or something, we can take that for whatever we think it's worth. But if they felt there was compelling reason to object, there have been times when other members of the public have presented some kind of documentary evidence that could be included in the record. And we may not, you don't have to personally like the situation, but I think we're obligated to act within the boundaries that the law and the ordinance and the judge have put upon us, that we must work with what we have. And if there are findings that can be pulled out of here that support your position of denial, then those need to be ignored.
Right. Okay. Well, it's, uh, we're... I mean, I'll make a motion to deny it.
Well, we haven't called for a motion yet. Does anyone else, um, have any points they would like to raise?
I mean, just, the, the one thing I'll say is, and again, I'm not, i- if there's any, I know, if, if there's any, like, if, if anyone's, you know, leaning towards opposition towards this, if there's like a page or a line number in the transcript, by all means, point, point it out to me, you know, because this is, you know, this is something I have an open mind on, you know? I'm just kidding, you know, if there is something there, we should, it should be addressed, um, just so we can, so we can note it.
Okay. And so if such a motion was made to deny the application, then those voting against the motion, uh, either the, supporting the application will need to provide findings of fact to support their position. And they can be, um, you know, based on findings of fact that have already been entered into the record or new, um, extractions from the testimony that's presented.
I would make a motion to deny.
Well, does anyone else have any thoughts, um, before I call for a motion? All right, uh, will someone, uh, like to make a motion on this application?
I would like to make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, so we're now going to be to make your motion. And for each of the standards, you're going to have to present findings of fact that support the denial of that standard.
All right, I'll make a motion on application.
I'll second it.
Well, we, we haven't even made the motion yet. It's still in the process.
Making an app, on application 20-37, Daniel Carton and forces, Jowson, owners, Tracy Jowson, applicant, 24 Laurel Lane, clap mat, 13D, lot 202, request a, or a special use permit under sections 32-47 to build a two-family dwelling in an R10 zoning district.
Probably just go standard by standard.
Special use will be compatible with the neighboring land uses. I find that the special use will not be compatible with the, with the neighborhood or other land uses. On page 19, line 3, it is stated that it is not appropriate to discuss what happened at the planning board and why they granted the subdivision. That, I don't believe, is correct. The zoning board would be pruned to know what the planning board was thinking and what issues were considered to make the decision they did as far as changing the lot lines. Perhaps some of those issues were left out. Um, this kind of opinion can sway members' thinking and lead to accusations of lack of transparency by Mr. McKenna on page 20 and line 13. I would say fact two, testa, voting, testimony by Mr. Carton on page 7, line 16 of terminal court reporting and states that the six-family in the 67-unit apartment complex is part of the Laurel Lane neighborhood and Laurel Park. This, I believe, is completely false. Those apartment complexes use on, uses on Medicom Avenue and Homestead. Start that. Those apartment complexes use Medicom Avenue and Homestead Avenue to go in and out of their residences. They also have chain-link fences or heavy brush or plantings to keep people out of their complexes. That also keeps them separate from the Laurel Lane neighborhood. The, uh, launching ramp part feature are for Laurel Park residences only, not from the apartment complexes. Homestead and Almeida Streets are not included in the Laurel Park Lane neighborhood. The two-family proposal not be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Page four, line 6, this joint admits that a two-family does not fit the neighborhood.
Is that it for the first standard?
Um...
I mean, Chuck, uh, once we've made the motion, if you have others, events, findings, something, yeah.
I could, uh...
So the first standard was compatible with neighboring land uses.
Do you want me to add something?
We could add a few things, if we could pull it out of the...
Yes, if you wanna add, if there was another piece of testimony that you'll support that's not compatible.
Ms. Jowson said...
What, where is this in the...
Uh, I can...
Well, it could be from the minutes, too. It don't have to necessarily...
It's from the, um, court reporting, and I didn't put D line. I need to just read the glasses.
Well, wait, let me fill in there. On page four, line six, this is Jowson admits that a two-family does not fit the neighborhood. So I think that, that's already, that could be in there. Mrs. Jowson. So you'll notice that it looks just like a single family, which is the intent and important to me. So that, so that it, although there are some other multifamily housing units in the neighborhood, which is completely false, I would like to look like a single family just aesthetically, and you know, believe that it does fit with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. She wants her family to look like a single family. A wolf in sheep's clothing is still a wolf. Two families, as we know, um, will add cars, traffic, renters, and change the character of the neighborhood. That is pretty much common sense. Fact three, page eight, line 13, through page nine, line four. Mrs. Remy backs us up with her opinion, as does Mr. McKenna, a former county councilman, and Ms. McKenna through various pages from 17 through 22. It should be noted that this meeting was held via Zoom, and most people, and especially older residents, are not familiar with this type of meeting. In my walk of the neighborhood, I only found people very much opposed to this new change to their neighborhood. And ironically, we now find ourselves at a new Zoom meeting with our neighbors not allowed to speak.
Chuck, did you have something else on the first standard?
I think he, I'm going off the general court reporting. Page, uh, what they call, what she calls page four, on line four, she put you, uh, Ms. Jowson. So you'll notice that it looks just like a single family, which is the intent that's important to me so that, although there are some multifamilies in the neighborhood, I would like it to look like a single family, which, if you're compatible with the neighboring land, you're admitting that you're building to look like a single family because there are all single families.
Is that it on the first standard?
I think that's it on the first.
Mr. Ellis, I just would like to add that there are several properties in that area that have in-law apartments. So to say that unequivocally they're all single families is not an accurate statement.
On the record, we offered them...
No, we're not, we're not debating this, so when it comes to time for other...
I'm not paying the bill, and I'm not doing the wrong thing by...
Gentlemen!
If, if there are other opinions on other findings of fact that support an alternate position, then when it is time for those members to, uh, vote, they will state that there are mitigating facts that they feel are contrary to their feelings. That's, that's apparent.
Said a couple times to, you know, saying that, can you just put on the record, based on what? Based on?
Based on my, uh, going around the neighborhood, looking at doors. There's no two families there. So for my, for my checking on the neighborhood and walking the different streets and driving around, I didn't see any two families. I did see a house with two doors, but it very well could be in-law apartment. Mr. McKenna, um, special use will not create a hazard in the neighborhood. Yep, special use will not create a hazard in the neighborhood. Yes, it will create a gradual change to the neighborhood. Fact, Medicom Avenue became the eyesore embarrassment by the zoning board. It started by one, I'm bringing this up, and I know this is...
Is this from the testimony? At what, what page is this on?
I'm sorry, that is not on the testimony. But I can't, let me, I'm gonna have to, uh, see here.
So the standard is that proposed use will not create a nuisance for them. So is there testimony that you believe is contrary to that?
I don't know if I can dug that out of the testimony or not. I think I testified to that in the testimony. Give me a second if you would.
Another thing I would say is, you don't necessarily have to vote to just approve it based on all four standards. Another thing I would say is you don't necessarily have to vote to just approve it based on all four standards. You feel only doesn't, I mean, if people's one standard doesn't comply with would be basis for denial. So if you don't have any findings for that standard, you can make your motion if you feel it does meet that standard.
All right, well, I have to use my own testimony on page thirty two. Fourteen through twenty five, I think. Twenty three on page thirty. I don't see it being compatible with the street as I have driven around it. I don't see the special use will not create a hazard in the neighborhood. I don't think that the two family don't create a hazards.
So doesn't that say it would not create a hazard?
And I think I'm gonna have to leave number two out.
We only, we only need one.
Also, okay, so part of the motion has to address whether or not it meets the standard of number two. So I mean, you can say that it does meet the standard and cite some evidence that's for, I mean, we have to say one way or the other. Whether it's testimony or standard.
I disagree with what I said previously, a special use will create a hazard in the neighborhoods.
So we have, we have to address standard.
Well, do this look like. Well, let me, let me jump to number three, the special use permit.
All right, so hold on. So we're holding on numbers. We have not made a determination yet on number two. So we're moving on to number three, when we'll come back to number two.
Special use permit will be compatible with the community comprehensive plan. I believe that it will not be compatible with a comprehensive plan. Special use permit is in fact opposite of the comprehensive plan. Housing top, housing stock and longstanding neighbors. Town of Warren has a diverse housing stock, but it does not mean that it should change different neighborhoods from single families to two families. In fact, nowhere does the community comprehensive plan advocate, advocate degrading or changing the neighborhood. Discussion of a diverse housing stock or changing the character of the neighborhood will not provide economically, economic benef beneficial, it will not be economically beneficial to the town of Warren. Fact will cheapen, degrade and overcrowd the area. Page twenty nine, line nineteen does not meet the standards for the community comprehensive plan.
Any other testimony citations for not meeting the comprehensive plan?
Well. Well, I think it's.
Was there any specific guidance from the judge on that standard if he had commented on?
Well. On page twenty nine, line nineteen. Testimony. It can't be a litany or just something that's normally. Can't be something, in other words, I believe that on page twenty nine, as the judge says on page nine of her decision, the application of legal principles must be something more than a recital or a litany. I think in approving, for those that wanted to approve this, it comes across that way, but nowhere in the findings in it does it say that there's no facts to back that up. And generally, property values are more in the neighborhood than when you put two fam, than when you put two families in there. So the fact.
Is there a specific piece of testimony that you can point to where someone says it's not compatible with the comprehensive plan and that being the person with knowledge of the comprehensive plan?
I would say that the judge is asked not to have just a recital of, you know, that meets the comprehensive plan. But there's nowhere in here that that specifically says that it does. And in fact, it's remake, make more sense that the fact that it's in the same neighborhood for I don't know how long, seventy, eighty, ninety years, there's not been a two family there. That's not part of the comprehensive plan to make two family area. Well, that's not, that's not changing the name. You're not arguing this. You should.
Bob, we can't interject a new testimony. I will say Barrett, that in my original motion, I have stated that I believe this compatible with the comprehensive plan and I do cite then that the plan encourages diversity in the housing stock and also encourages multi-generational living arrangements. So I've stated that I felt that it was compatible and give the reason why I felt this. Based on my knowledge of the comprehensive.
Well, I couldn't find anything in the comprehensive plan that advocates us changing neighborhoods for a single. I would agree with you, a multi-generational living, in-law apartments and such, and having a diverse housing stock. That doesn't, diverse housing stock could be, you know, something on Water Street with two and three family homes versus a neighborhood out in Tucson that has a single family. It's not go plop a two family across the street. And that's what's happening here. So I don't. I, I believe, no offense to you, but I believe that's what the judge is talking about and not just having some sort of recital of a recital or litany of the legal principles. So I don't believe that special use permit will be compatible with the comprehensive plan. I'll jump to four and see if I can make that work.
Does the public convenience and welfare being served by the special use?
Right. No. I don't believe that the public convenience and welfare will be served. Approval of application twenty thirty seven will hurt, degrade and cheapen the Laurel Park neighborhood. I have to.
Chuck, if you have any findings, I'm certainly reaching.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm trying to line up on getting your pages in line. I didn't do that before. I quoted, but I didn't.
Also, again, you have the option, I mean, you can concur, you can find that it does support number two. Have no points against it. That's based on testimony that can include in the motion that it needs numbers for. Why would it?
Well, I don't, I can't find anything in this testimony to.
San Antonio.
Well. Public convenience and welfare will be served. I can't find any. Can't find any reason why it would or not, not be in the testimony.
Andrew, what was your reasoning for saying it was?
My original reason was because it's serving the public convenience and welfare was that it would help increase the diversity of housing stock and meets a need or helping multi-generational family living, which is encouraging, in my opinion. I felt that that was serving the convenience and welfare of the public because it was filling that particular need.
I think it's just the opposite. I think the people on Laurel Lane, at least two of them are questioning it. And I think this venue of the Zoom meeting, as you know, tips, tips of scales that if they want to appeal it, it, it come back, we'll roll out it.
Findings that the people that opposed it formed your opinion that it, because they opposed it, it wasn't serving the public convenience and welfare?
Yes, I believe they don't want their streets, you know, their small houses, small streets, and they don't want it to be overcrowded.
You just cite that, was that the testimony of that convinced you of that?
Mr. McKenna.
So Mr. McKenna's testimony in opposition convinced you that it would not serve the public? Correct. Is there anything else on the public convenience and welfare before we go back to number two?
No, I think I'm gonna have to go up on number two.
Number two, we need some testimony that demonstrates either that it's not going to create a nuisance or hazard or has the ability that it will create a nuisance or hazard. Well.
Well, my, it can be my testimony again. I think the special use will not create a hazard in the neighborhoods. I've.
Definitely, you said it will not create a.
It will, I say, yes, it will create a gradual change to the neighborhood. And I give my I believe I have Medicom Avenue in here. So. No. No, there isn't.
So are, so are we, so is the motion that it is needing that it doesn't create a nuisance or hazard? Or you're still saying that it does not, or that it does create a nuisance based on your testimony?
I think if I'm catching it correctly, the transcript indicates that Barrett corrected himself. I think that's what we're reading. Am I correct in that?
Somewhat, yeah. When he said it did not create a hazard, then he retracted that.
Correct. I think he corrected himself and the transcript reflects that.
I bring up the Zoom meeting, I could change my mind on it.
All right. So what testimony convinced you that it was creating a nuisance?
Well, I think, I think my experience on the board is there's no testimony. Basically, being a board member and seeing what's happening, what zoning can do. But that can't be.
I mean, it does meet, but it's like, that's okay too. I mean, it's same legal purpose. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to knock me out every standard to support your motion to deny. So, I mean, it, so what is your motion on that standard? You still feel it doesn't meet that?
I think, I think it will create a, I think it will create a hazard in the neighborhood. I think, I think it will create a, I think it will create a hazard in the neighborhood.
Based on?
Mrs. Remmey's on page ten stating that it could become unrelated parties moving in there. It could become a rental of college kids. It could become rental, we don't know what.
Okay, so fine. So is that the piece of, so that's the piece of testimony that we're gonna cite for that?
Yes.
Okay.
In-law type apartment, but based on the current living needs and the age of the living with her mother who's going to be living with them. Uh, that would not be appropriate, given the uh, the family that would be visiting. And that, you know, that's why they opted to go with the two family as opposed to the size restrictions that would have been imposed by a mother-in-law type apartment.
Other additional findings of fact, modifications or conditions on the motion? Hey, is there a second on this?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Nice. I don't know if we will vote now, I'll hold, hold the board again. Um, I will start on the opposite end with myself. I'll be voting gay. Mister.
Yes.
Mister Nice?
Yes.
Mister Holby? No. Mister Thibodeau?
No.
So the approval fails um, three.
I just want to clarify on the record on the basis. Do I, so like how is based on? Basically on.
Yes.
Okay, twice for us on the other side.
Correct.
So.
I just want to make sure that we can, perhaps say twice, but that was the reason.
Do you want us to each? We can each affirm that?
Correct.
I mean, I affirm that uh, my yes vote is based on uh, the findings of fact presented in the motion of the, by Mister Rayno.
Agreed. Same.
Okay, and Barrett, your vote against is based on what?
Based, based on my uh, my findings of fact before. I think um, I was held to a little bit of a higher standard there to take stuff out of this testimony, and I, I can certainly read uh, read my findings of fact of the testimony again, I don't know if we need to do that.
I think we have, I mean, you have your findings on record. And you referenced, um, so. Chuck, do you also?
I agree with Barrett's.
Yeah.
But also on the public convenience of welfare to refute what was put in the record. I do believe in multi-generational family living in one location, and that's what our in-law apartment ordinance is for. When you turn around and you go multi-generation in a duplex, that does not guarantee or have any law stating that it is gonna be family.
Right, uh, so that is the determination of the board. So your application is not successful. Thank you all.
Yes. I know that wasn't fun. I said, I know that wasn't fun.
Thank. Thank you, counsel.
Need a breast fit? Uh, the stomping. So in deference, in deference to the stenography, we'll have a five-minute recess before proceeding.
Okay, you're unmuted.
I'm muted.
It is.
Sounds personal to me.
Left the mic stunned.
You heard that?
Yeah.
So I believe the stenographer is ready, so we can resume uh, the live hearing. So we're, we're ready to go back on the record, so we can turn the microphones back on. And I would just ask that since we do have this heightened situation, uh, at the bottom of the box, I think this is really like. I would ask that some people are not necessarily viewing uh, video, uh, just to make it clear uh, when you're speaking or making the motion, uh, just identify yourself by name, so we can have free uh, record.
Who is that? We're alternates, we're not making decisions.
So. Yeah, I want to make sure that on every square here, initial applications are also the ones that we can. Yes, I think. Mister Nice from.
Correct.
That's right.
So that means the first alternate was Mister L, so will be elevated to a voting member. Uh, Mister Nice from will not be participating.
So bad.
Is anybody else here? Yes, and. He's got still leaves us with one alternate, Mister Francis. May participate.
So I can't see anything? I don't get it.
I'll be quiet. No, no, we chain him, we chain him to his chair when he shows up.
He's everybody's right.
All right, so, under new business, I'm sorry, under old business, uh, number two, with application twenty-one forty-seven, Motor Realty LLC owners and Creative Sign Works applicants, six fifty-one Medicom Ave, Platte Maps fifteen A, lot two fifty-one, request for variance under section thirty-two one fifteen to install signs that exceed the maximum square footage allowed in the B zoning district. This matter was continued in the January nineteenth meeting, uh, when the board requested that some uh, additional consideration be given to the design of the signage, and the applicant has now had uh, time to do so and has submitted a document showing a revised proposal. Good evening, please.
My name is Stephen Litwin. I'm an attorney in Providence. I represent the applicant. Hello, let's see, I'm here. I, I think you gentlemen want to speak with Bob Rochon from Creative Sign Works. I know Bob came back to the owner and to myself, and I would present the submission to the board, I'm sorry, for, for the signage that we would like for the Baja's restaurant. So I'll just turn it over to Bob.
Absolutely, so, again, just identify yourself at the microphone.
Sure. Uh, you can just hold the microphone up here. You know, it's awkward and uncomfortable, but.
Good evening, uh, my name is Bob Rochon from Creative Sign Works, to represent, um, I'm sorry, I'm here to represent Baja's, um, at uh, six fifty-one Medicom Avenue. So at, at the last meeting, uh, we presented the drawing, and there was some concerns from the board. I took it back to the owner, by the way, he was supposed to be here tonight, he does uh, extend his, sorry, he had, he had a family emergency, he actually had. He wasn't, uh, he wasn't able to make the meeting, so I need to apologize, sir.
So if you can, so I think summarize, what are the differences that have been made between the prior information and?
Sure. Do you, uh, do you want us to hold these up, or would I, would it be okay to present these to the board if you want to take a bigger?
Circulate them.
Are they the same as the color copies?
Well, they're, they're, I actually have it here.
Oh, I'm just saying.
So they're just a bigger version, if you'd like to see it, that's all. So based on.
Right.
Steve will be our letter turner. Based on the, the, the last one, uh, we've reduced the, uh, if you notice, uh, we've actually reduced the audience as well, too, to, uh, so if there was another window and another canopy here, and there was another canopy here, we removed those. We removed the signage that faces the middle of the building. Okay, so we wouldn't put signage there at all. We also reduced the size of the signage over the uh, drive-through window, which will not be a drive-through window, um, uh, you know, based on everything with the board that said last time. But this, we reduced this one for about, uh, down about fifteen percent from the last time, just to make it smaller.
So that sign is facing south.
That sign is facing south.
And the north-facing sign on the building.
It's been eliminated.
Okay.
The owner would like to, uh, he wants to keep the pylon. So I know there was some kind of talk about that last time, but uh, he definitely wants to keep the pylon sign that's there now. And I actually did a drive-by, um, not too long ago, and I came off of Medicom Avenue, and I do believe that the, the pylon is very critical to that, to the location, because you don't really notice it to your opponent. So with the pylon, that would actually give him some exposure as you're coming up and down the road from both sides.
But a pylon is facing north and south.
Yes.
I have a question, what is the rationale for then creating a second south-facing sign above the drive-through?
For the pickup window.
Right, it is pickup, that would be a pickup window.
The former drive-through.
Right, the former drive-through. So, uh, if you've noticed on your drawings, um, and on, based on this sign here, there is a, there is an existing uh, drive-through menu in the back, which we've just converted to a, a static sign that will tell people that they can order from their car and just pick up at the window.
Just, you slip that thing.
Right.
So can I ask you a question? I just want you to answer that, that question before you move on. You have a south-facing uh, pylon, and you're adding another signed south-facing. Uh, what's the rationale to have both? Because it, I believe from the last um, meeting, you were well over this, the amount of space?
We, yes.
For signage?
To answer your question, your first question, the reason, the reason B is to identify the, the pickup window. Basically, just put a sign over that identifying it as, you know, the pickup window. To answer your second question about, uh, actually, I think, uh, you actually asked me something about, uh, what was the second?
That south-facing sign was the question that I had, um.
It's the duplicate, you've got two big signs facing.
Let's say Baja, let's, let's say Baja's.
Right, so the, right, the, the, the pylon, uh, definitely has a north and a south-facing side, okay, that's out by the. We put a Baja's on this one, just to identify it as, you know, like, almost like an entry, but it's not really an entry, it's just, it's a pickup window. So we just put a sign over that to identify that, to make it more of an important feature of the building.
I guess, how, how are people approaching that pickup window? Or are they driving around the building the way the circulation currently works, so?
They would definitely drive from the north side to the south side, but if you would have pulled into the parking lot, it still identifies it as like a pickup window or a driveway.
So when we discussed this last time, you said people would drive up, they would go to the kiosks, they would activate whatever order they have through electronic means.
Yes.
Then they would park their car, because it wouldn't be a drive-through.
Right.
Because what you're talking about is a drive-through. If they're going to the window from the kiosk.
Yes.
So are you saying they're going, it's helping people drive to it, or are you saying that they're walking to it? Help us understand.
All right, as they drive, as they drive around the north side of the building, into the drive-through lane, they will come upon the sign, where the sign basically just tells them to scan the QR code to order, park in your order we brought out to you.
Okay.
So they, you know, that's basically what they do, there is no menu there at that point.
Yep, yep, we're, um, I think I get that portion of it. I'm just wondering, by what you said, that they would drive around and then go to the window and use it as a window?
I think the idea of it is to make the building, the business a little pandemic-friendly. It's just an idea to identify where, after you've parked your vehicle, where you would walk to to pick up your, your, your order, rather than going in and out of the front door, just to try to separate the traffic.
It's not advertising, it's more of a, it could be an announcement.
Right, it's just a way to identify to somebody, this is where you come to pick up.
Hold on, we can't have multiple.
Sorry, I should know better than that.
Again, we need to try to identify ourselves by name.
Dave Francis, um, or David Francis, um. I, you're asking us to increase the ability for you to put more space, more signage? And I'm just wondering why that's needed? It doesn't say pickup, it doesn't say come here, walk here. You do have an awning that does mention what you're selling, so I'm just, I'm just wondering your intent of including it.
In the buildings and the restaurants and things like that that we've done, in my opinion, my professional opinion from a signage point of view, if we just left a, a canopy over, it could actually be just, you, if I actually just left that brown, right? It, it would look like just another window. So when I add that, it basically tells you that it is a window that you can pick up your order at. So just by adder, adding the name above it.
I don't know that that's intuitive, but I'll take your expert, um, professional opinion.
It's just one of those, it's, and then I, I did want to just state that the, uh, even if we would have put in the pylon, basically, we'd still be asking for, you know, definitely more permission to put more signage in, because the thirty-six square feet just doesn't allow us to put anything, um, on, uh, this building that would work for it.
This is Mister Rayno, and I think I'll echo Mister Francis's concerns, and particularly based on the usage of that window that was just stated, if the intent is for someone to pull in, scan the QR code, park and walk up to that window to get their order and return to their car, we're talking about a signage that needs to be pedestrian scale. We're not talking about something that needs to be read by a car doing forty-five on Medicom. I think that sign, based on the usage of that window and the fact that there is already a north-south-facing pylon sign that is far more visible than any aspect of that south-facing facade, I don't see how that extra Baja sign, is it just superfluous?
And this is Mister Ellis, the chair. I would agree that that's not necessarily providing pedestrian direction on how to find the pickup window. I would think that maybe pavement markings or a ground-level sign saying this way to pickup window would be more appropriate. If they're coming to pick up an order here, they already know they're picking up the Baja's, I don't think they need to be told again that this is the Baja's window, because this is clearly the Baja's building. So I don't think there'd be any confusion about, um, what establishment this is. I think in terms of a pickup window, you just need something simple that is directional uh, to show people where to go. I don't see that the extra advertising of the name again does anything to the functionality of that window. Uh, and I would agree that, you know, why do we need yet another piece of signage facing south? Because it's not, I mean, people driving by are gonna look surprised, and that's what they're gonna see. And the extra sign doesn't really add to the functionality of someone walking to that pickup window.
This is Mister Francis, again, I just wanted to add one more point, um, it has traditionally been a drive-through, um, and so to break that, that habit, that people are conditioned to go around and actually go order and then go to the drive-through. So leaving that sign, it, it does look like it's still a drive-through. I don't know that that is differentiating, um, the customer from the past experience. And because the parking lot is so small, I think they're gonna just do a loop and, and go to the drive-through with the car. So just a, something to take in.
I think it could be a, a potential point for discussion, since this is where walking pickup only, that maybe a condition might be some ground-level directional signage that would in fact prohibit particular traffic in that way.
This is Mister Alps. Yeah, that's, yeah, this is Mister Alps. I agree with them, I think you could put right on the awning, pickup window, and then some round, you know, like maybe waiting area, round signage that says, you know, pick up here. Again, to get away from that, that persona of cars coming and driving in that location. I think it would just be safer all around that it looked like a pickup window, not like a drive-through window. So that signage, I, I agree too, that that signage would come down, maybe pick up on the awning, and some ground signage that actually, the yellow lines out showing where they're supposed to stand, where cars coming around as well, know that they're not supposed to drive into that, that specific area. So, so you create a, because you're coming around a blind side, when you're coming around the backside, you're coming around a blind side where people stand. Yeah, yep.
Cool. And, and, and.
Make it bigger, I'm saying get rid of the Baja's logo, oh, should we, this is Chuck saying that anyway, Ron. Put that bigger up there, so that.
Maybe we, what we could do is put some signage here.
Or an arrow.
Would that be adequate to the board to do something like that? Maybe at car level versus up here?
Because that parking lot's tight, and you're starting, people trying to drive through the, you're not gonna be able to separate a lane, you don't have a lane.
The, the good thing is, is that when they come around the back, they will, they will, they will come to that sign, that, that there won't be a menu there. So there won't be a menu to order from, so they, you know, and then, that's not going to be used as a menu. So, uh, they will come upon that sign that basically says, scan a code to order, um, park in your order when it's brought to you, or if he, you know, again, if, if we have to go back to a COVID situation again, um, you know, that's basically why he wants to use it. I'm not sure if he's gonna have, well, that's basically what David has said to me, uh, I talked to him earlier today before he, you know, at this point, and he said that basically, you know, he wants to keep that open or use this particular thing, so that if COVID comes and people can't come in the building and things like that, they can still come again.
So this is David Francis, again, I just want to park in, in on what Mister Ellis said, and Mister Thibodeau said prior, um, it's very tight. You, you're gonna, we're gonna need to put extra signage and have some provisions in place so that people aren't coming around that corner. That is the only lane of traffic. When you're pulling in and out of those parking spaces that are on that south-facing side, that lane basically is the lane you're pulling into, to, to leave. So, um, I think we have to make sure that there is clear communication at the kiosk as well as around that corner, so folks don't drive through there thinking they're going to that pickup window.
Sure.
So, that's my, that's my only.
And this is Mister Alps, I, you know, if there's a huge concern on that being a pickup window with people standing, I think they might even have to put maybe some kind of a, you know, divider pole, uh, like a metal pole, in case somebody does come around that, that they see that they've gotta go around that pole. If you have people standing there, I mean, I, I've got, when it was, when I was cooking Friday, I went in there all the time, and that, that lane is, it's tight going in there. You, you have, you're setting up a hazard for the people that are gonna be standing there, and if you want to walk up to them.
Yeah, I, I drive by there.
I mean, I went in. I mean, I, I.
Thank you, but that's anecdotal at this point.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think we better just stick to what we can recognize as potential factors.
Yeah, so Mister Alps, this is Mister Alps.
Hearing your call.
And this is Mister Rayno, and ultimately, I don't necessarily know that that kind of signage would preclude us from coming to a decision, because generally, that type of signage would be considered wayfinding, which is not necessarily counted in the signage allotment for the property. So anything that is directing traffic in one way, shape or form, would not necessarily need to count against that overall advertising signage allotment.
And this is Mister Ellis, the chair. As long as we're putting it like an arrow on the building that says pickup window this way or pedestrians only, we're not relocating any Baja's sign.
Right. No, and actually, I mean, if it, um, I mean, we could definitely take that sign off.
I'd rather have that, this is Barrett Holby, I'd rather have that sign and take down the, uh, the highlight.
But we're gonna just, just share again, um, we can discuss the, the, the pylon, right? There's one thing that's on the table at the moment, is moving the advertising signage from the pedestrian pickup, you know, because that's a possibility, so.
Yes, that is possible.
So we want to talk about pylon, and I'd like to hear, uh, some justification for the pylon and the large Baja's sign over the front entry, because, I mean, they're probably no more than ten or twelve feet apart from each other, so do we need that heavy of a concentration of that large signage package within a few feet of the end? Do we need that heavy of a concentration of that large signage package within a few feet of the entrance? What, what are, what are the two signs trying to talk about?
Okay, let me address the pylon sign. The pylon sign reaches people as they're coming up in a company. If we just have the pylon without the signage on the front building, it's very plain. And it just doesn't really, it doesn't, when you, when you look at the building, it doesn't really look like the pylon. It actually goes with the building as signage goes. The fact that they're that close, unfortunately, is just a situation there. Ideally, I think, I mean, the pylon is a little closer to the building and the pylon is a little closer to the street, but the pylon is existing. So we would like to continue to use that to attract customers coming up and down Medicom.
So this is Mr. Ellis again. I know the last meeting reference was made to a draft document of new design standards for our generation. That is, is that the opportunity to read that document?
I have not. Is that, was that something that?
I believe at the last meeting, we said they could have a discussion about new standards if they want to tailor their design to be more responsive to that.
Again, we're in the draft stages of a company scope. I think his point is it's that sign is there with advertising that the property is for sale. A year from now, would we be having the same conversation? Probably not. But as we update the company's plan and only changes the form-based rule that will be adopted as part of those only changes, if that's on July and August of this year, so I, I don't think.
Ellis, if I may, I, I did take the opportunity to speak with Francis. And I was also asking about those new design standards. Basically, as the town planner has indicated, that's something which might be, but may not be. So I was instructed to proceed as with what we have now, address the concerns that we have had in less than some of the signage. Proceed forward now as a consumer, and I've been up and down that street. I actually did it all night as well. I personally feel that without, you need the building sign and the pylon sign because they do go together. Come up the hill, you see the pylon, and then look for the building. If there's no sign on the building, you will go sipping right on by. So I, just as a consumer, in my opinion, and I would agree with Bob, that they, they go together as a package. They just happen to be close together. That's, that's the way it was designed. You just need them.
Yeah, this is Mr. Ellis again. So I think one of the other possible concessions that was discussed was that in trade-off or cramming more signage, we might revisit the way in which the signs are illuminated, maybe going through a halo style lettering or downlighting or some of that.
That was entertained. I did discuss it with the owner. He, like I said, I think I said on the last meeting, he has body locations. This is how every single one are signed and this is his brain. And he did not want to do any halo lit lighting or downlighting. The way that they're actually illuminated now is the way that this is. Their own location as well. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we took off the north side. And we definitely won't take off the south side. Maybe some compensation for that. And then, I'm sorry. Is this, okay, so I apologize. Steve brought this to my attention. zoning ordinance, section thirty-two.
We talked about that last time that we go that internal illumination is allowed, right? But because you're asking for more signage, we're going to trade something else to get a larger package.
Well, I just. I, I was gonna ask, I, I actually. I was, I was going to ask you, is, is where it says internal illumination, is that required? You know, basically is that the required illumination?
No, it's not required. You're allowed to have it. But we were positive that in exchange for getting more signage, we can be able to forego the illumination. You said the answer to that is, yeah.
But it, we've tried to, we've, we've also tried to remove signage to appease the board as far as, we're not asking for as much anymore.
We need to look at, in the reduced capacity, how much over the allowable. So the last time, thousand percent over or something like that. So we need to recalculate now how much are we over the requirement?
If we are taking into consideration the entrance elevation, we can take off the south elevation. So we would be looking at right around, I would say, two hundred and ninety-seven square.
And so that's including both faces of the pylon?
That's, that's taken into consideration, side A and B of the pylon. Parking or, or the sign in the back. The entrance store logo graphics. And the painted wall graphics.
I'm sorry, what was the paint of, oh, the spice of your life?
And actually, we had to shave something else off.
Honestly, I kinda like those.
They're very soft.
And I think that's why I like them is they just sort of feel like they're part of the building.
So this.
I didn't hear you in that total, sorry to interrupt you. This is Mr. Reynon. I didn't hear you mention in that total the actual overhead Baja fresh grill on the front facade of the building.
The entrance elevation, the Baja's fresh grill is fifty-six point three five square.
Okay, so that is included in that two ninety-seven?
Yes. I actually had a total of three twenty-eight point four and I'd have to pull out my calculator because I can't. But if I take off the south side elevation, the south side elevation is twenty-nine point eight square.
Out of curiosity, on page three of your package, this is Mr. Reynon. Can you point out for me the location of that entrance elevation west and south side elevation?
So the west would be the front elevation.
West would be the front elevation. Okay, so it's, this is.
Okay, east. I apologize. Well, all right. So we wrote it up wrong.
Okay, but so that's a representation of the components of that sign, not the actual arrangement of that sign, correct?
Not the wall that it's on or the, right, no, it's, it's the, it's, it's, well, they're individual signs. So they, each letter is, they're channel letters.
Gotcha, okay.
So they're, each, each letter is an individual sign.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think, so to clarify that, this is Mr. Ellis. Definition of the calculation, the ordinance, I believe, is the minimum size rectangle that would encompass all the lettering and graphics. It's not the surface area of each individual letter or graphic.
Even with, even with an individual letter?
I think it's pretty clear of your definition here. Yeah, so for a sign consisting of, this is under thirty-two, one thirteen, A three. For a sign consisting of individual letters or symbols attached or printed on a surface, building, wall, window or awning, the area shall be considered to be that of the smallest rectangle or other shape which encompasses all of the letters and symbols.
So that basically even if they're individual letters mounted to a wall of the structure?
You have to draw a shape. I gotta, I mean, it could be like a T-shaped thing in the event of this Baja's, I guess. Rectangle or other shape, but some kind of continuous polygon that would encompass all of the letters and symbols.
I could, based on the visions that I have on the.
I actually, I don't think you're gonna be all that far off. I just did the primary Baja sign based on the dimensions listed. And instead of being fifty-six point three five, you're at sixty-six. So we're, we're not.
Just Chuck, why don't we just use the sixty-six? Keep moving forward.
Yep, and then we have whatever the, the fresh grill part of the name, you know, that's six foot one by whatever, eight.
Eight inches.
Yeah, so then there's a rectangle that encompasses that.
So, I mean.
And we've got a couple of small Baja's on the doors, chili pepper.
If, this is Chuck, if you put your signage on the door on the inside, does that still count as signage? On the window sign? I'm just saying.
Yeah, window sign is a sign. And then if, if it's like on a sandwich board inside the restaurant that is visible a long time ago, we had a.
They do it all the time.
But if it's applied to the window surface, or I believe it defines it as contained within the framework of the window, that counts as a sign.
The entrance doors are two square feet each.
And then we've got something for, you know, spice of your life, some kind of a shape that would.
Those are fifty-two point five square feet each. Can't really, can't really.
Is that still lighting around the building? Red lights or is that just red?
That is, that is red light.
So we can, so. Hold up, so I think, you know, I think what the vice chair is getting at, the definition of what a sign is constitutes a display of one or more letters, words, pictures, graphics, logos, colors or lights visible from public ways or places, whether freestanding or attached to a display upon a structure or any other thing which intended to convey a message. So special colored bands would seem to fall under the definition as colors or lights that form part of the sign. So I think we need to add in the size of the height of these bands by the length.
Just because they're lighted?
Well, it's, so part of the definition of sign and the ordinance it says, it can include colors or lights visible from public ways or places.
So if they, I'm just, for argument's sake, so I understand this, if they painted those two red stripes and then downlighted on them?
Well, it does say colors or lights. I think it would be up to the board to determine if we feel that that falls within sinuses, any permanent or temporary display of letters, words, pictures, graphics, logos, colors or lights visible from public ways or place. So I mean, a sign could be a painted, I mean, someone could paint a big rectangle on a building that's like a different color from, generally the standard is, and this was again from a long time ago case. If the building was beige, you painted a red rectangle on it and then you put like the name of the business inside the rectangle, the whole red thing.
Would be the logo. So that, so those two red stripes going down the building, that would still be considered logo?
I'm inclined to say it is, yes.
Yes, I'd like to hear the back part of that because I think it exempts it.
Well, I think it's drawing attention to the name of the restaurant, but the brand is one of.
I think they're just trying to make the property look good.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Yeah, because I could say those are your theme colors.
I, I think I, this is Mr. Reynon. I think I would tend to agree. I mean, if somebody was to open a, you know, Tommy Hilfiger boutique somewhere on Medicom, paint the entire building red, white and blue, the entire building is not signage.
Can, can we get a read on that? This is Dave Francis.
One more time?
Yeah, so, well, as I would say, I can see both sides, but I would say the colors can have conveying meanings. Like you see the Microsoft Windows logo, the more colored squares with no words.
These are just red stripes. They're just architectural enhancements. Really, they just, what they really do is they enhance the architecture still. They really, he has own locations, he doesn't have. They're not part of, they're not part of the Baja brand or the Barhouse, Baja logo at all.
I really just think they're trying to make the building nice. I mean, I get it. From that, it's more just a, a painting of the way you're shaping the building.
You saw the building.
Oh, I know. Looks nice.
It does.
Well, again, we can all determine, you know, what our interpretation is of what's conveying a message or what's not conveying. I'm sort of inclined to think that it is conveying a message. If the thing was purple, maybe it's just an accent, but since red seems to be one of your theme colors.
Can you make a color change?
I, I think that would be a little distracting.
Well, they're not, they're not before us. Yeah, I still think it's one of the theme colors. I think, I mean, the awning might be conveying a message that these are Baja's theme colors.
Well, the, I will say, I will say the canopies are his theme colors. I can't, we can't deny that. If you went to another Baja's, you would see the canopies and you could see the red. You would see the red and green and canopies, but I believe in the first meeting, I don't think the canopy.
I don't think this needs to be a stumbling block. I just expected it. In my view, as an architect, I think that's conveying a certain message because it's specific to Baja's. If this was a Dunkin' Donuts, that red stripe probably would be a different color. To convey a message consistent with Dunkin' Donuts, it's part of branding. And so any colors that are associated with your brand to me conveys a message about your brand.
So.
Oh, I don't want them to be anything. I'm just saying if you have them, let's count them as signage, in my opinion. Well, that's a very. Yeah, we're not, we're not judging aesthetics here. That's not a. Yeah, it's not a.
On this particular board, you can see the top one has the Baja's logo, the bottom one just on. I could definitely see how the red plays into the Baja's logo on the, on the top one, but on the bottom one, I just see it as not particularly.
And that's fine. That's your position.
And this is, this is Mr. Alps. So this is on your other buildings or not on your other buildings?
He had, no, all the other Baja's do not have it. Actually, I, I will say it added to one in Attleboro. So there is one in Attleboro that has red, because it's only a facade. You got a face, it's just in the face, but all the other Baja's do not have it.
Do not have what?
Do not have the red stripe.
Had the red stripe.
Right, right. They do have the, they have the, the canopies and they have the logo over there.
They don't have the, they don't have the neon stripe.
Okay. There at all.
This is, Mr. Francis, Dave Francis. I did, I do recollect that the last meeting, we did not count that.
Right.
In our discussion. We did. I explicitly remember, in fact, I think you mentioned that it wasn't, so. Yes, I think when we were doing our calculations, we forebode that piece. I mean, the record will correct itself, but I, I believe that was not considered, just so that we can get a point of order.
We did bring up the red stripe, red stripe, because I brought it up.
Yep, and I think it was not included as signage at that point. At that point in that part of the discussion, it doesn't mean that during a vote, it can be, because if we reread that wonderful clause, it does kind of.
Yes, I don't know.
Is open for, it's, it's open for interpretation. So.
Determining is the quantity now being requested, is a reasonable quantity for this business based on, you know, the reasons that the pylon needs to be that size, it's based with work and some traffic. It's based with work and some traffic, you know, uh, you read that, you know, the overhead door sign needs to be that size, otherwise people won't know it's Baja's. Can you feel that there's findings of fact that support this size or can you, uh, feel that signage needs to be further reduced, uh, to be compliant?
What should we do, public comment? I mean, the only one.
You have, if you want to add anything else before we go to the public comment, we'll come back.
Right, I, I think we're okay, yeah.
So is, is there anyone in the public, um, the Zoom? No, all right, so we will close. And so we will close, uh, the public comment portion of this. Uh, so what are board members' thoughts on the proposed, we do, uh, signage package?
Um, I mean, this is Mr. Renon, I think. My current inclination is to say that without that south facing Baja's, um, I'm actually comfortable with the rest of it. Um, I do think it's unfortunate that the pylon sign is so close to the front facade, um, but compositionally, I can understand why they need to be there. Um, the only other thought that I had was whether or not, since the pylon sign wants to be internally illuminated for traffic at night. Um, whether the Baja's on the front facade could be non-illuminated, although I honestly think even that would look really weird at night. But yeah, yeah.
Well, this is Chuck, could we go, could we get some downlighting? Could we get a compromise here? They want the pylon, I agree with you, they need it on the front of the building. We were talking about like, what, outside lighting or downlighting? Can we do something like that as a compromise? I mean.
You're talking about for the Baja's that's over the door.
Correct.
Lighted pylon.
Right, we have a lighted pylon.
But the Baja's distinguish itself from the pylon being lit with another method, either payload lettering or a good stack or something.
Right, and I, and I, and I, again, Chuck again, I do agree, like, your, your pylon, your pylon is where it is. Not because they put it there, because that's the way they stuffed that Kentucky Fried Chicken in there forty years ago.
Yeah.
So there's, I get he needs it to get the traffic, and I get he needs something on the building to make it look like it's, it's not empty.
Yeah, the only thing that worries me, and this is me putting on my lighting designer hat, is having the same logo lit two different ways in such close proximity will look like a mistake.
Yeah, okay.
I can agree with that. And the, the pylon, I mean, just. The pylon, you know, we're, we're blacking out the background. So the only thing that's gonna light on the pylon is just gonna be the Baja's letters, the pepper and the fresh grill. That's all it's gonna be lit, so it's not gonna be a beacon of light on Medicom Avenue.
Right, and I definitely appreciate that. We've requested that of other applicants on Medicom in the past and been turned down. So the fact that that is a, a preferential way to do a backlit sign, we definitely appreciate that release time. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think for my personal taste level, I think if we can lose the Baja's on the south facade, I would be comfortable. I personally.
This is, this is Chuck, I agree with that, I'll go, I'll go along with that. And this is Mr. Al, I think I would agree with that too as well, because if you, just putting it on the record, that if you look at the old Kentucky Fried Chicken Taco Bell, I mean, they had quite a bit of signage on there. They had it on every side of the building. I think that's a pretty good compromise for what they came, came in.
Uh, any other items, points of discussion?
Uh, so basically, on this particular design, we're taking out the, uh, the south sign and everything else we're approving.
I think that sounds like, uh. The proposal that proposal as submitted, uh, minus the south facing Baja's fresh grill over the pickup window. Seems to be under consideration, and we have some kind of mathematics representing.
Yep.
Go ahead, Barrett.
Uh, I think the last meeting, we talked about getting rid of the pylon sign, and I'd rather have the Baja's over the pickup window than.
I do, I do.
Neighborhood and a, a red stripe, I don't think that should be illuminated, I think it makes it look like a restaurant and an airport, right? It's a neighborhood, right across the street and enter the neighborhood. So, uh, I think it's good to have a red stripe there painted, uh, but I don't think it should be eliminated. And I think what they have proposed, it all looks pretty good, but I would, I don't think the, the pylon sign is necessary and small and crowded. And I think it's something we could try to get rid of on Medicom Avenue, so I would see if we can work to get rid of that, that's my opinion. I've driven by it and looked at it several times now, and.
I, I still, Chair, I still sort of feel that the overall jumble, the so much quantity of signage that the pylon is so close to the. Uh, main Baja's sign over the door still feels a little overwhelming to me, but I just recognize that, uh, the pylon is already existing. They didn't put it in that position, so, um, you know, if they want to have signs on the building and the pylon, kind of can't change the distance they are. Oh, you want to move the pylon? You want to move the pylon?
Go through the road.
I'm, I'm, I'm only.
I don't think you have any room.
It's late.
I don't think you have any room.
No, there isn't. I'm joking.
I mean, would there be any consideration of slightly reducing the scale of the Baja's over the door so that it's within the raised roof? It doesn't sort of overwhelm that raised, uh, parapet beyond that?
We, we actually did that, that the, uh, the structure makes it look even smaller. Um, and, uh, but we feel like at this, I mean, I know we've, we've definitely taken out the north side and the south side and. Right now, we're only asking for the pylon at the side.
So, yeah, you're, so if we reduce it down to like approximately three hundred and thirty square feet or thirty was required, so we're still like eleven times. You know, that's eleven hundred seventy-three, um, pretty sizable.
And, and like I said, even, even if we just put the faces in the pylon.
Oh, sure.
And, and we just, from a sign, from a sign management view, I've been doing this, I, I really think that if you have a restaurant with Baja's. This is what he needs to make this location work better. Uh, it keeps the brand, it's aesthetically pleasing.
And he needs a pylon sign?
He, for that location, I, I, I went and looked at it, and for that location, I honestly, because I, I really, I, in person. But I really think he would take that location, and we, we discussed it earlier, because if, if somebody were to come up Medicom Avenue and all of a sudden. So what are they gonna do with it? They gotta try to run, but they don't have any, they don't have the right amount of time to sit there going, oh, it's a Baja's, or I'm gonna go to Baja's. I can pull in safely.
I mean.
You really can't see the building and take care of it.
If there was only two lanes of traffic here, then I think there would be a stronger case for not needing the pylon, but because of the way Medicom is. And see that the traffic has, much as we may not like the overall aesthetics of the pylon. I think there is a legitimate case that it isn't informing people from a distance, because you're not necessarily gonna see the front door Baja's. Approaching, hiding, driving, out of time, even the volume of traffic in the middle of the road.
And particularly the fact that this is the point where that road goes from two lanes down to one in either direction, so people are paying attention to other things when they're passing this building.
And, and just, this is Mr. Al, just for clarity as well, I mean, I've been, I went by a couple of other locations and one at the East Bay, which is in, uh, in, uh, on Tucker Avenue. I mean, Newport Avenue in, uh, East Province, and they have a pylon sign there as well, and the sign on the building, so. That, I think the reason being like that is just at the speed and the, the full lead traffic, um, come up on the building, cover on that quantity, I really don't know it's there. And I think that, that pylon sign wasn't there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't notice the building either, so I have to.
Other questions about finding comments?
Um, to Barrett's earlier point, this is Mr. Renon, um, I guess one question would be, would the owner entertain having those red stripes be a painted detail rather than a illuminated detail? We have talked about how the north and south facades are sort of the least impactful facades on this building, since they're the least visible from pretty much anywhere.
I. It, I, I think at this point, I, I, I would have to say, um, with him not being here, I. I would love to say that. I hate to put him off for another month, though, I mean, he is over. Um, he has a, he has an available sign up front.
Yeah.
He makes it look like it's still for rent. He did a nice job inside, I went to get the. Oh, thank you, thank you. He does a, he really does a nice job inside and outside. Um, so I, I really can't, I can't answer that right now. I, he had to leave quickly today, so we were only able to get a little bit of time to basically, you know, um, say, listen, what can we, you know, like, what can we definitely do away? If what do you definitely, and I have to agree with the front and the pylon sign. Um, if, uh, the, the neon striping, as far as I'm concerned, it just, it does enhance the parking lot, it's very dark yet. It's, it's, it's not intrusive, it's, it, it is nice, it's kind of subtle, it just lights up the top of the car. And to me, it's very classy, and it just draws a little bit of enhancement to the building, um, you know, the building didn't look, it, it was horrible, um, before he painted it.
So, this is Mr. Francis, so, um, last meeting, we also didn't have the owner present, and we asked that you provide us with someone who can make decisions. And I believe your attorney said that he's here in your owner's presence, so. So.
I think we have to proceed, the stripes are part of.
I guess that's what I was trying to say.
And I'm not even sure a majority of the board feels that the stripes mean conveying a message to me, so they're relevant.
Well, this is Chuck, I have a question. Do you have any other lighting in that pocket?
I do have the need to have any other lighting.
So that red lighting isn't really, it isn't like we're making this big glowing. So it's not really gonna be affecting the neighbors or it's.
I just think back to the side row with the Kenny Ryan. With the glowing red light.
So, but there's no other lighting in that parking lot, so it's not like we've got like a McDonald's or Burger King where they've got that lighting on there.
No, and as a matter of fact, we're, we're taking out the, um, the drive-through menu, it's not gonna illuminate.
Okay.
As far as I know, as far as what we know.
That's, that's.
It's gonna have to have some lighting on it, it's dark, but, um, it's not gonna be the, the bright white light like a menu would be. It won't glow from within, right?
I do see that, this is Dave Francis, that you definitely added the signage on that as opposed to last month. When we talked about no signage on that, just having that little, um, barcode or whatever it's called, uh.
I thought, I thought that this was, I, I thought that this was included at the last, the last package.
Through our discussions, uh, there was a.
This was the last package right here, can I present that to you?
Oh, sure.
I think it was, it was more of a logo.
Yep, and I believe when we talked about that, you, you said that to reduce the amount of size of signage, that you could take that off there as well. And do something with the signage so it wasn't illuminating, like a downlight or.
We could definitely do that on that, absolutely. Um, we have to do a little work to that cabinet anyways, it's not good shape.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, this is Mr. Al, I'm not, I mean, opposed, I mean, if not entirely illuminated, uh. I suppose some type of indication of what the QR code is for, um, is probably relevant, uh, is this, is it smaller than it was in the previous?
Yeah, the logo is smaller, for sure.
Before it was bigger. Yeah, that's what I remember from before, so it has been reduced, uh. Any other closing remarks you want to make? All right, so, uh, is there a motion of this application?
Anybody? Uh, oh, can I borrow? Oh, no, that's not it, need the other one. Uh, all right, I will move approval of application twenty-one dash forty-seven, Moda Realty LLC owners and creative SignWorks applicants. Six fifty-one Medicom Ave, Flat Map fifteen A, Lot two fifty-one, request for a variance under section thirty-two dash one fifteen. To install signs that exceed the maximum square footage allowed in the B zoning district. Uh, in approving this variance, we will note that the hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure. Inso much as this is a very narrow, very deep building on a very busy corridor of Warren. Uh, and therefore, a larger quantity of signage is necessary to properly mark the building and make sure that patrons are able to find it. With adequate time to make a safe turn off of Medicom Avenue. The hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, uh, it certainly is a function of the building and many of the signage locations being utilized are existing. Uh, the granting of this requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, as much as that disappoints us. Medicom Avenue is already a very brightly lit area with a lot of backlit signage. And the nature and styling of this signage is certainly better than many other comparable examples on the Medicom corridor. And in approving this variance, we find that this relief is the least relief necessary under the circumstances. And that if it were not to be granted, uh, it would amount to more than a simple mere inconvenience. Inso much as the applicant would be stuck with a this space is available final sign instead of proper branded signage. We will note that based on the revised package provided dated February ninth, uh, the modifications to that package will be that the south facing Baja Fresh Grill. Sign over the online order pickup awning will be removed, and the remainder of the signage will remain as detailed. Including the Baja logo, the words fresh and grill, the applied graphics to both the entrance and exit door at the front of the building. The two spice up your life painted graphics on the sides of the building. Both faces of the existing pylon sign and the existing menu board for a rough total of three hundred and twenty-eight square feet of signage.
Is there a second or, or, I'm sorry, the conditions or other, um, amendments? Nope, is there a second?
Mr. Al, so I'll second it.
All right, uh, most of the votes have been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All votes, thanks for the motion. Five to zero.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next matter on tonight's agenda, according to discuss, uh, take action on the circulated Warren zoning board rules of the. I believe, uh, last meeting, Mr. Renon noted that there was a clerical or grammatical correction, uh, wanted to maintain.
Yes, and of course, now I cannot for the life of me remember where the heck that is. That's a very good question.
It would mainly be grammatical in nature, I believe.
Oh, yes, uh, so, thank you, under ten, there was A, and then there's, uh, at the end of the second sentence. Second, members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak, that should be B, so we are missing a bullet point.
Oh, I see, so we got first, second missed a bullet point, third a bullet, so it could be four bullet points.
Correct.
Right, so, all right, there's that, um, were there any other grammatical, um, points anyone had? Okay, so, all right, there's that. Were there any other grammatical points anyone had? Was there anything else, any other board members felt needed to be revisited?
Mr. Chair, I know there was some, I think there was some talk about the sevishah deadlines, the 35 days and whatnot. I know I wasn't here last month, but are we keeping that the same?
So it's that the board's pleasure, if they feel the system is working well as documented here, or if that needs to be adjusted? Does anyone on the board have any thoughts on whether that has to be adjusted?
I just think my big concern is just making sure that, you know, for, you know, for Rhonda and mine, making sure stuff comes in a timely manner that they can get it done efficiently. And I think if, you know, if that, if that time works for them, then I'd say let's keep it. If it doesn't, you want to do pressure on us delaying things.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that? Simple consensus is we're happy with the standards as they are. So if someone would like to make a motion on the standards for the procedure.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we. Oh, yeah, this is Mr. Nystrom. I make a motion that we adopt the warrant zoning boards rules of procedure as, as currently written with the correction on paragraph number 10, subheading A. The, at the end of the second paragraph where it reads, board members may ask questions of the applicant in his or her witness period, with the addition that there is a new subheading beginning with second, comma, members of the public could be given an opportunity to speak, and so on and so forth. That way, we are creating essentially an A, B, C, and D subsections matching with the Ezra first, second, third, and fourth.
Are there any other amendments to the motion?
Mr. Ellis, I just, in terms of submission of applications.
Bob, I think it's a matter of.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, it, from the town's perspective, as long as we're meeting the advertising requirements, the 30 days is onerous for an applicant. It's, it's two weeks in advance for a butters notices and applications. As long as somebody meets that timeline, then the town's position is that we should accept those applications. To have an application come in 30, 35 days in advance of the meeting is, is, is not right. That's just the town's position.
Council wants me to address that. I've heard from, 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 no one had an issue with.
No, I will bring it up. I will have the council address it because I think it's, it's unfair to applicants. I mean, obviously, you know, what we saw tonight, and this is me editorializing, people are not reading things in advance anyways. So, I mean, you can take whatever position you like, that's fine, and I will be quiet. I do want to introduce Mr. Cabral, who is the building official.
So, if no other board members have any amendments to the procedure. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Who's not opposed, the rules of procedure as amended will be adopted. Now, the next matter, final matter on the agenda is the nomination of officers.
Oh, we got that?
Yes, well, it should have been, yeah, very happy.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So we will now entertain nominations for officers. If someone has a nomination for either the chair or the vice chair.
I will make a motion to nominate Barrett for the vice chair.
All right, so Barrett has been nominated for the vice chair. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice chair? Very done. There is a nomination of Mr. Holby for the position of vice chair. All those in favor of the nomination of Mr. Holby to serve the position of vice chair?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none opposed, and Mr. Holby is appointed as the vice chair. Are there any nominations for the position of chair of the board?
I will nominate Mr. Ellis for chair of the board.
Thank you. Are there other nominations for chair of the board? None. Has been nominated by Mr. Ellis, served as chair of the board. All those in favor of the nomination?
Aye. Aye.
Seconded? Seconded it?
I'll second it.
Well, should I have seconded it, or Mr. Holby?
You can point for it. Can we vote on it?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. You're also, you're part of the board. So I consider both, both voting to be unanimous of all seven members. All right, so Mr. Holby and myself are newly elected to the position that we currently. Is there any other administrative business anyone has?
Mr. David Francis, I actually am having shoulder surgery next month. And I probably will not be able to make the leading, as I'm a surgeon.
Leading capacitated.
Yes, I'll probably be highly medicated laying down. Yeah. I'll be watching, I'll be watching from afar.
Just coming in soon, we'd like to watch it too.
So, other than that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.